Call the meeting for at 6 o'clock. First order of business is public comment. If you have a comment, please come to the podium and direct your comments to the board. You have three minutes. All right. Item number three, appointments. Karen Lawson.
So I'm here for two things. One, at the February Rec Commission meeting, we talked about the possibility of adding some more activities to the rec offerings. And one of the thoughts was to add fitness classes that people would pay for. A portion of the cost of the fitness class would go to the town and the other portion would go to the director. But currently, we don't allow people to charge money for activities at the park, so I need to get the select board permission. And another thought was a snowshoe guided tour. I personally have been on them in the past, that you hire a guide and everybody pays a certain amount of money. And then you walk through the trails with the guide and the guide says, okay, that's a porcupine chrysanthemum, and that's, you know, porcupine habitat, and things like that. I did reach out to the Conservation Commission and the Trail Commission, and that's something that we would work together with the -- reach out to the chair of both committees, Don Jeans and Deb Sugarman. And we would all work together for possibly a tour guide and/or best trail to use and things like that. But I need permission from the select board to charge for activities, because currently, like I said, we're not allowed to. Andy has suggested that Nottingham -- if this passes, I'll reach out to Nottingham, because Nottingham has a great program for charging events. Which also, they recently had a snowshoe guided trail walk as well at the Marsden property.
I'm waiting to hear back from the New Hampshire Municipal Association as to whether the board's select -- there's a difference between municipally sponsored events that you charge for and non-municipal events. And they were going to give me an outline of how to proceed legally. The select board may just be able to waive the no-money situation for the Parks and Rec Commission as long as it's municipally sponsored. I'd also reached out to Primex. David has not gotten back to me yet with an opinion, but I know that Nottingham, Deerfield, Candia, Northwood, all run very similar programs, collect fees, use independent contractors, and don't have any particularly rigid commercial policy for anything that's operating under the umbrella of Parks Recreation. The other reason I mentioned Nottingham to Karen was they use -- it's not inexpensive, it's not free, but it's not very expensive either, a recreation fee program. You don't have to handle cash. You can, if you've got a computer screen, you can take registrations and collect fees online quite handily. And you can also, they've got it set up so you can split between sponsors and structures and the town's revolving fund pretty easily.
And since we don't have a rec director who could be organizing that, it makes sense we have to find some way to make sure we can get people.
Does this open us up for other issues? Other people wanting to use our facilities and...
I think it could. And one of the things I did draft tonight that I've got under the Town Administrator's Report is a non-municipal commercial use agreement that you could use. It essentially gives the select board the ability to have the apps, which you do anyway, but codifies and formalizes the process for you to say yea or nay to somebody else coming to you looking to use a public facility.
Right.
Okay. So do we have to wait for you to get back from DRA and other...
I would, and particularly Primex is who I'm most interested in. If Primex is good to go and says absolutely, just have the board wait for Parks and Rec.
Here's some public comments.
Mr. Tappin?
John Tappin, 187 Stepney Stones Road. The motion says to be deposited into the Recreation Commission Revolving Fund. I don't believe that we have a revolving fund.
I think they have...
A revolving fund would have been established by both the Legislative Party. I think that we probably have a special fund or...
Yeah, there's a fund that's...
So...
Let's get the wording right.
The wording is up to find out, especially since at the deliberative session, there was talk about slush funds and not knowing what the fund is. We should be really clear on what fund is this, what is it used for, just so people know.
I can certainly find that out.
Absolutely.
So let's change the wording.
Point is, we have a piece of our program going through the funding exactly.
I was under the impression that you had a revolving fund.
I was too. I don't have that.
I will double check.
You have a fund that goes year to year. It's not a non-reviving fund.
Aunt Tappin, 187 Stepney Stones Road. I'm a member of the Conservation Commission, but I'm not speaking for the commission. This is the first that I've heard about it. Karen did say that she reached out to the chairs. So this has not been discussed by the commission at all. So you should just be aware of that, that you haven't discussed about this.
I'm sure we probably didn't. I think we've had a work together.
Give me the 20...
It might be 28. It's a Tuesday.
I'll call Karen.
So maybe Don can...
Oh, it may be on the agenda, but just don't know about it.
Well, and it won't happen this year anyway, because the snow's gone.
Mr. Eric?
Eric Sawtelle, 93 North River Road. Just a point of information, I wanted to talk to the Town Administrator about this anyway, but there is a bill for the legislature to study the landowner liability portion of the New Hampshire trails that are used particularly on the state trails. And there is an existing brochure that's put out by the New Hampshire Trails Committee and Fish and Game that talks about an insurance policy called Land Owners, which is out of Connecticut. Maybe you know something about that. I don't have it at the top of my tongue right now, but I can get it for you tomorrow and do that to you, because it addresses just this problem. So the question is, is this proposal just on town only or on private land? So if it's town only, I don't think it would make a difference, because the state, the state lands, a lot of those state trails are on private land. So there is some nexus there.
Yeah. You want to plug it in. I'm familiar with what you're talking about, and that is primarily geared at shielding private landowners that let public use take place on their property, particularly with regard to snowmobile trails, ATV trails, and cross-country ski trails.
The other part of that was though, that if you charge a fee, what your liability is beyond the duty of care liability.
And it's pretty, there's a pretty significant difference between private landowners and municipal landowners for the Parks and Rec Department allowing the property to be used. Eric, you had something else?
Yep. And then the next thing was last, I think it was August, we, when we discussed a few changes to the traditional leave fair, the trustees of the trust fund recommended that we go and change the charge of the leave fair to, I have the letter here. If, for example, if the leave fair fund authorized the leave fair committee to change the wording, for example, if the applicable reference to the leave fair were changed to leave fair committee event, then the fund and the charge could be made to apply to events of any nature organized by the leave fair committee. So with that recommendation from the trustees, we did that. We met in January and we did that. And it's provided in your agenda packet. And if not, I have extra copies I can pass around. The only, we did miss in our meeting, we missed the first paragraph. So the fair committee has not changed, has not voted on changing the first paragraph to be consistent with the rest of the document, which is, it says leave fair committee, and we added sponsored events and activities to be consistent throughout the entire program. And the reason for this is, we want to be able to have other events throughout the year to raise money for such as things like the fireworks. So as it's currently, the charge is currently written, is our understanding we can't do that. So by changing the charge, which the select board wrote originally, we can do that. So our plan is to do more activities to hopefully raise more money to sponsor like such things such as the fireworks.
That's a great idea.
So what's the part in the first paragraph?
The very first paragraph?
Yep.
The leave fair committee, we didn't insert committee sponsored events and activities. And then at the very end of that paragraph, committee sponsored events and activities. We forgot that paragraph. So just to keep the whole charge consistent, we would like to make those friendly amendments tonight.
So do you have a copy?
I have.
Sure do.
And that will help keep us, the trustees, seducted, so...
I know in the past we've had some trouble with getting payment in quickly, and I know this, I think this time it went really, really well. Is there a way to make sure with every event that there's like a certain amount of time until receipts are in and that kind of thing, so that's not challenging?
So... Yes. So you could add that wording to the charge, because currently we just receive reimbursement once a year.
Okay.
But if you wanted to do it, I don't know if the trustees want to reimburse the town after every event. That's a question for the chairman. Or once a year.
What would we best?
Once a year.
Once a year.
There are things I was going to speak to.
Okay, go ahead. Was it one of the things I want to speak to?
No, you go first.
Under further, the select board hereby requires the committee, under number, well, it's a second bullet. I don't ever remember seeing a written report from you guys.
No, we've never done one.
So can we start doing that?
Yep.
That would be great.
Where are you on that one?
Second page.
Second section, about half a minute.
It's where the bullets are. It says, first one is to report to select board at the beginning of the fair committee planning season. I'm talking about the second bullet, the written report. I don't see it one.
No. Okay.
All right. Mr. Tappin?
John Tappin, 187 Stepney Stones Road. I'm speaking as an individual, not representing the trustees and the trust funds. The trustees did not discuss this topic at their recent meeting, because this topic had previously been removed from the select board agenda. So we thought that it was, and it'd been gone for several meetings. The question for you, the board, is whether you want the leave fair committee to sponsor other events in addition to the leave fair. If the answer's no, then all the other comments I have here are moot. But if the answer's yes, I think that the committee charge as presented needs more work and should not be approved in this meeting. I'll start with some of the small items, and these you could change in the meeting. The chart states that the committee members are appointed for one year, but the committee previously requested and the select board agreed to change this to three years. The date for the written report to the select board has been changed from October to December. The leave fair fund authorization requires the leave fair committee to issue a report to be included in the Town of Lee's annual report. Neither of these reports has ever been submitted, but the deadline for submission to the annual report has long been in November. It's questionable if they have the report to the board submitted after the submission to the annual report. Some larger issues. Second bullet on the item on the first page has been changed to extend the fair committee's authority to receive income and make expenditures of funds from previously stated related to the operations of the leave fair to now stating related to the operations and activities of the leave fair committee. But it still states that this is, quote, "subject to the rules and restrictions which may be set forth in the document creating the leave fair fund." The leave fair fund was created with a private donation, for which the donor stated that the donation was, quote, "to the Town of Lee to be used for the leave fair." The leave fair fund authorization states, quote, "This fund is created for the sole benefit of and to provide financial support for the operational, capital, and equipment needs of the leave fair." There's an obvious question of whether the leave fair fund can be used for other leave fair activities, leave fair committee activities. And there are issues with trying to change the purpose of a trust fund, which has been previously established with private money for a specific purpose.
So...
So with this range of issues, if you are considering authorizing the leave fair committee to sponsor other events in addition to the leave fair, I recommend that you not approve this, but rather sort of send it back to committee for all these kind of details to be worked out, and how would this really work with a fund, whether another fund needs to be established, et cetera.
I was just going to ask that. Could another fund be established for the point of fundraising? But isn't a complication?
Well, at least for me. So the point of this is so that the committee, whatever we call them, can do other activities to earn other income to support other activities. Is that correct? So, and the only reason you use the trust fund is to reimburse yourselves and also to put in the money.
A place to put the money. Right. So we originally had, when the town took over the leave fair, we originally had a bank account at Northeast Credit Union, which was what we used. And we put all the donations in there. Mark Coustra was a signer on the check. And Frank DeRochi, maybe? And then it was determined that we needed to set up a fund managed by the trustees of the trust fund. So we took the balance of that money, April 6, 2000, the town created this charge, and the balance of that money, which was left in that account, was deposited into this account, which was $3,300. And that's what started the money. That's what started the account. And the select board wrote the description of the account. Don't forget, because we looked it up, by a select board meeting, we established the fund, and this charge was written.
That's great.
So is that possible? Because I know we have other funds, like the rec commission has a fund, the heritage commission has a fund, and ag commission has a fund. But those are permissions. I wonder if we could set up one for these extra activities. Leave the fair and the fair committee, that seems to be working, right?
Yep.
And maybe we can set up a different one for these extra activities.
You could call it the fundraising. So leave fair fundraising or something different.
Because the thing that's confusing me is, I understand why you're doing this, but the leave fair committee and the leave fair fund are for the leave fair.
Right.
So if you want to do another fundraising group, who might be the same people...
Right.
To do these other particular events.
And we're trying to raise money for the, right, for the leave fair.
But they're not leave fair, it's not the leave fair. It's for the leave fair. So maybe the friends of the leave fair or something like that.
There you go. The friends of the leave fair, so...
I mean, as an individual, I can't make that decision here.
I think anytime that you increase the number of activities offered to the town, like anytime that you take the burden off the taxpayer, to me, that's an excellent idea.
So what would we use for seed money, donations?
For the, going back to the leave fair fund authorization, I read you the first sentence and the purpose of the fund. Second sentence is, "The fund shall accept contributions from and through the leave fair committee, which shall be the result of sponsorships and other contributions and proceeds from and related to the leave fair, including private donations, gifts, and grants, and/or grants." So the trustees and trust funds, when they look at this, they just look at, this is the charge, this is what we need to follow. And they try to follow that exactly. And that's the issue here.
Friends could donate into that for the fair.
But the thing you're getting at is, you want to have this event, there's going to be some expenses. How do you get reimbursed?
Correct.
So is that something that we can set up a separate thing in the town where we can pay for those expenses? Hopefully, the expenses are less than the revenue. That would be important thing.
Otherwise, it would be fundraising.
Then it's not fundraising.
Right.
But then, when you get whatever it is that you saved up for, if it's fireworks, then you can make maybe a donation to the fair and then, possibly.
Yeah, I'm sure that that's accomplishable fairly easily, I would imagine.
Because then you don't have to tweak any of this other stuff.
So would it be a trust fund as well?
No, I don't think so.
It'd be expendable fund of some sort for fundraising purposes.
It is just a general fund.
I'm sure I could get a donation from somebody to start with.
Oh. Eric. Mr. Eric?
Can't see my glasses fogging up. Eric Sawtelle, just to answer some of John's concerns, I think partly they were answered. But when we looked at this, we thought the problem is, well, two problems. The main problem is that the way the charge was worded, it was more geared towards just the fair activities. Because we are now in a budgetary situation where there is no money allocated for the fair, we have to go raise that somehow. So my interpretation was that we can't do that with the charts that we have now. John is correct in his wording of what the leave fair fund charge was, and where it says, "The fund is created for the sole benefit of and to provide financial support for the operational capital and equipment needs of the leave fair." I can guarantee you that nobody on the leave fair committee wants an extra job. It's just focused on the leave fair. But if they have to do activities to raise money to support the fair, events and activities, that's where we wanted to add the wording in there, so that we could do that. And I think, I think we are covered, and maybe John has a different interpretation, but, "The fund shall accept contributions from and through the leave fair committee, which shall be the result of sponsorships and other contributions and proceeds from and related to the leave fair, including private donations, gifts, and/or grants. The fund may also accept contributions from other persons or entities which are given to the Town of Lee Fair Committee for the fund's use, consistent with its purposes." So this would all be to support the leave fair. The other activities may be fundraising activities to raise the money, like, for instance, if we wanted to have an ice cream smorgasbord, which we have done in the past, we could do that. And that money would be a separate event. The difference between, and the reason I use both the words event and activities, is the leave fair is an event, but what we do there is an activity, or a number of activities. So I think we're somewhat covered by the wording we have now. I don't think we have to tweak anything, other than if you accept the language in the charge to the committee, I think that would be acceptable, given the fact that we already have a charge for the leave fair fund. And I don't see that we'd be doing other activities that wouldn't support the fair.
For sure.
Or that would be an endpoint that didn't involve the fair. The other, the other two points that I wanted to ask, and we just talked about one of them, which was the December reporting date, that was based on just the only activity being fair. But if, and I wasn't clear, and I'm not clear now, as to whether that date was picked, where it was changed from October to possibly December, is that because of the annual report date? And if so, the other, the other conundrum is that the fair committee changes on April 1. So if you've got activities after December 1, which, do we go to a fiscal year or do we go to a activity year through those committees? So from December to July, there's still half a fiscal year, which would impact the report, the fiscal report that goes to you. So after December 1, what do we do? Wait till the whole next December?
Well, it's my understanding that those reports are July 1 through June 30.
They are, all of those reports are.
So that would be your period. So I think this...
But if you have to submit the report in December, which year does that apply to?
It's for the year that ended the previous June 30th.
Yeah.
So, okay, as long as everybody's understanding that.
Yeah.
And the other part was...
Which is, which is different than number two, where it says to prepare a written report on activities finances of the fair committee for presentation to the board at their first meeting. That's two different things. It could be the same thing, but they're two different things.
So, but, well, it's two different things, because it's activities and finances. So I did put in there, see, to report, the first bullet is to report to the select board at the beginning of the fair committee planning process each year, which would be, I'm assuming, April 1, because that's when a new committee would be established?
Well, that also gets back to Mr. Tappin's point about, we gave you guys the ability to have three-year terms, and that needs to be tweaked in here, too.
It was an addendum to the original one, but we didn't be carried over.
Okay.
You want to have events between December and December.
I think in terms of your question, Eric, in terms of you guys can determine when you start or end each hour.
Okay, but then it says...
If April doesn't work, postpone those.
Again, it says in that first bullet, and regularly thereafter is requested by the select board until the books are closed on the fair committee events and activities for the year. So then are we looking at July 1?
June 30th would be the close, I think, yeah.
Okay. So... And so then do we need to stick to that second bullet of the first regular meeting in December? Are you suggesting changing the report on activities and finances?
Yeah, if you want to use the same report that you put in the town report, it needs to be a little bit earlier, I would think.
Right. So what would the date be? Would that go back to April or would that be November, whatever you're saying?
Well, we'd have to go back to November, because that's when the town reports are due.
That's when, we asked for the town reports, and as near as I can tell, they all come in December.
Okay. So then we'll make it November.
And maybe in the first bullet, we can put in, till the books are closed, or, you know, June 30th, or whatever it is.
And the last point was that I just changed the wording in the, 1, 2, 3, 4, 4 paragraph, second page, top paragraph. The fair committee chair shall be nominated by the committee at the first business meeting of the committee following April 1 of each year, which would be potentially when you 've got a new board, instead of it said following the leave fair each year.
That's a good idea. So April 1, makes sense.
Well, if that, if that's the meeting, Eric, I don't know, in terms of your committee, is that too soon, too late?
Well, that would be one of the changes. And typically, typically because of the policy, the board, committee, commission's policy, the chair has to be appointed.
It should be May. We don't usually meet until May. We don't usually meet in April.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't make any difference. One way to meet, it's just as the first business meeting, the committee following April 1, instead of following the fair.
Okay.
Is that okay? Everybody on the same page today?
I love that idea. And then if you start wanting to have a spring event, we'd meet earlier, and that would still be that one.
And I think that was all substantive changes.
So what do you, I know Karen, you were asking for this for tonight, but how would you feel more comfortable if you guys tweaked it and brought it back again, and maybe give it to us before, and so we could read it? That would be great.
Well, I'm sorry. I thought you got it in your agenda packet. I'm sorry.
Oh, I did, but not your version.
I got that today.
So...
I just, that's my fault. My printer took a vacation, so every time I got some stuff to put this afternoon...
So if you guys can go through and tweak that, and if you guys are more comfortable with different dates or whatever, just put those in, what works for you.
All right, we will meet and work on those changes. Thank you.
So just hopefully you do it at the next meeting.
So we, the consensus is you are in support of those changes.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine. And work with Amy to figure out the thing that he can use in terms of budget. Yeah, because in terms of your seat footing, I would think you should be able to, if you've got expenses, charge them to the town, and then when you get the revenue, cover that, and then, where actually you have, give it to the fair, or however you want to deal with that. So just work it in.
Great, thank you.
Excuse me, I wanted to address that, but because we do have other commissions, perhaps we could run that through one of the other commissions as sort of... as sort of a repository or to give some seed money.
But it's a, however Andy wants to.
We'll use Andy's credit card and just pay him.
It's all Town stuff, so if the Town fronts the expenses, and then the revenue covers it, then the Town is made whole in that respect.
Well, that's what we do with the, with the barbecue and the pig roast. Pig roast and the chicken barbecue is, I use the Town Credit Card, and then that money is changed from the egg commission to the credit card account, because I don't want to have to spend $2,000.
I blame you.
So I think there's ways to do that.
Okay, thank you. It's exciting.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Tappin?
One last word. This coming happens with writing documents like this. The wording that was presented was very vague about Lee Fair Committee activities. The explanations made a lot of sense, but the explanations were for a much more restricted definition than the very loose definition that was presented in writing. And I think that's something that we do need to fix, because sometime down the road, five years from now or longer, somebody will be looking at this and say, "Well, but it says just activities." Could be any activities. But that's not what you were talking about. We were talking about activities in support of.
Can I address that?
That wording makes sense.
And that's the.
John, I did, I did think of that. Tried to address that in the language and. On the second page, second paragraph. "Select Board Giveout Delegates to the Fair Committee Authority Over All Operations of the Lee Fair Committee Sponsored Events and Activities Approved by the Select Board." So if the Select Board doesn't approve that activity, we can't do it.
I think the word "in supportive" is what you're hoping to add to that as well?
I was certainly trying to avoid writing this in this board meeting.
Yes.
Does that, if it has, if those events and activities have to be approved by the Select Board, you would give us direction as to whether that's appropriate or not appropriate based on the charge for the fair fund?
Yeah.
Does that answer your question, John, or not?
So we would not approve clay pigeon shooting at the.
No, but I think anvil shooting. I want to put that.
Anvil shooting, oh.
Anvil.
Anvil shooting.
Anvil shooting, not anvil shooting?
You just put a bunch of black powder on an anvil and light it, and see how far it goes in the air.
Oh, how exciting.
I can't wait to see one.
As long as we get approval from PrimeX, I think that would.
Yeah, I'll call them.
All right, and so, yeah, great, that sounds like a good plan.
So are you all set?
Yes, thank you.
All right, so I would do this. I want to do item number 6A.
Yeah, I thought you were going to do that.
Yeah, I know, and I forgot.
Okay.
So 6A in terms of the mask protocol. You had something in the handout, Andy.
Yeah, I do have the mask protocol, which basically leaves it up to the Board at this point. And here is the latest alert.
Great.
Recommends that you leave it up to individual choice.
Correct.
Yep, so we have at the moment, I don't know what it's called.
A mandatory face mask policy for public meetings.
Indoor.
Right, indoor public meetings.
So I make a motion to rescind that policy as a.
No.
Six, 15.
634.
634, is it? 634 on March 7, 2022.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And motion passes.
Okay.
Master still requesting.
De-mask if you want to. You don't have to if you don't want to. It's up to you.
We're still requesting mask for tomorrow at the voting.
That's the moderators' call, not.
I'm just letting people know that's still on the books, so that's on there, but I thought it was.
Okay. So Karen, you were all set, right?
Yes, thank you.
Larry?
Thank you, Scott.
Yes, sir.
He's getting stuffy back there.
Oh, yes.
Just wanted to bring you folks up to date on what we're doing for programming this year with the Rec Commission. The Easter Egg Hunt is on for Saturday, April 16. Cynthia McLean is heading that up, and she's got her group of people that she's working with to get that up and running. The Fishing Derby is on for Saturday, May 7. The Stevens have said it's okay to use their property, and so that's on. And again, Cynthia and Charlie McLean will be heading that up. Model Rocket Day, we've scheduled that for Saturday, June 11. We had a great turnout again last year, very popular program. And we have a rain date of June 25. We've been discussing some other things. The Music in the Park Program really didn't pan out the way we had hoped it would. We were spending a lot of money for bands, and we weren't getting much of a turnout at all. So the Rec Commission's working on revamping that into a family night to replace that. The family night would be the third Thursday of each month, starting in June, so June, July, and August, just one night during the month. And basically, it would be food, music, activities for the kids, you know, whatever other things we could get going for that program. And then we are also working on the Archery Program. Cynthia McLean is, we are, the problem we've had with that is trying to find an instructor to handle that program. So she's working on that, and she seems to think that she's completely pulled that together. So that's kind of it for what we're doing at this point. And we have discussed, as Karen had brought up earlier, some of the other things that some other members have brought up, winter activities and so on. I'd also like to say that I'd like to thank the Town of Lee for the last 10 years, having me on the Rec Commission. My appointment's up this month, and I'm not renewing. So at this point, I am stepping down from the Recreation Commission. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your 10 years.
Yes, Larry, thank you for all of those stuff that you've done. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
We had an email about this, and I don't, sure. Somebody was objecting to having an Easter Egg Hunt. They wanted to egg hunt or something?
Yeah, it was brought up in the meeting to talk about having, will we be writing the signs to make them egg hunt instead of Easter Egg Hunt?
What did the.
It was a vote, and it was 3 to 2.
So is it still Easter Egg Hunt, or is it just egg hunt?
The signs, I think, are going to be egg hunt. Is that correct, Karen?
Mm-hmm. Okay. I don't know. You've got the email as well, but.
I did not.
You didn't get one?
Well, I'm not sure.
Didn't they send it to you?
I'm not sure which one you're, okay, maybe.
There was somebody that was, I'm pretty sure I sent it to you.
I don't know.
I have seen some emails back and forth.
Yep.
Thanks Professor John.
Okay. Good. There is another, Steve?
So we. It all got started, this whole thing that we were talking about, when you wanted to get the new truck, Dick Wellington, red. So we started thinking, what could we do? So we ended up getting, they made plaques on the side for the side that say "Custom Engineered in Memory of Dick Wellington", that we were going to put on the truck. But he never worked in the transfer station. He worked in the highway department. So we were going to take those placards that were made, stick them on the new yellow Western Star, since he plowed many years for the Town, took out Karen's mailbox a time or two. And then the red truck had stickers, since we got it three months ago, that McDivitt made in charges for him, but they say "In memory of John Gunn", and he worked in the transfer station for a long, long time.
With raising, yeah.
So we're just looking for permission to stick them on the trucks. I haven't asked, I didn't, the families don't really know anything about it yet, because I didn't want to say something to them.
I'm not doing.
They don't know.
I think.
Sounds fine to me.
So the John Gunn will be on the nude red.
And then the newest plow truck will be for Dick Wellington.
Can you stick something in the e心 about both of those with some photos?
Yeah.
And maybe a little bio on both of the gentlemen, just a little bit dope.
I can have Pete do the John Gunn one and the Dick Wellington one. I'm gonna have to find, see if I can get radio right or something, because I never met them.
Okay.
It's a great idea.
But a little background on why the Town is doing it, that would be great. So that would be nice. Karen, you go.
Thank you for doing that.
Item number four, Town Administrator's Report. Yeah, I have several items that I circulated earlier, and these are, the first items that I have are draft items that I wanted to get a sense of how the Board felt about them. The first was Commercial and Non-Municipal Use Policy for Lee Parks and Recreation Areas. You don't have a commercial policy at present. A number of communities do. Probably an equal number of communities just ban any commercial use that isn't related to municipality through Parks and Rec primarily from their premise. But I had looked at several different policies out there. This is primarily taken from three similar New Hampshire communities, actually a little larger than us. But it essentially rests all authority with the Select Board for any commercial use or non-municipal use. I think it's important for the Board to be able to have a say if you have various religious groups or political groups, that sort of thing, showing up and saying, "Hey, you know, the policy, we want to use your field." I think it's important to have a policy in place and be able to say yea or nay. And this could also be adapted to Parks and Recreation. If PrimeX gets back to me and says, "Absolutely, you know, not, yoga instructor is a completely separate entity. We want no part of it." I don't think that's going to be the case at all, but if it was, we could also use this policy to approve or not approve that type of thing. I know in bouncing this off Denise as I was putting it together, her only concern was that we have a fairly simple agreement right now for people that want to use recreational facilities. And this, obviously, with the three pages. If you don't like the three-page model, I think I could certainly tune up the one page to some extent. Things like asking for indemnification or a certificate of insurance are important things that I didn't find on the existing Lee policy and some other little features like that that are important to.
Things that are extra that we don't need, or is that, I mean, do we need those?
I don't think so. It's just, it's very all-encompassing. I think it's definitive, so there's not a lot of gray area or ways around the Board's permission.
Do we have to have every, like, if it's a, if it's a paid program, does that be a different form than if it's a resident just having a creativity?
Yes, you actually have, you have a very simple agreement right now for, like, residents that want to use the pavilion. This would be just for commercial and non-municipal.
That's part of it.
So if somebody shows up and says, "We want to have a carnival, you know, for the Elks at Little River Park", or "We want to have the Republican Committee picnic and charge $10 bucks at the pavilion", that sort of thing. You can decide whether these are groups you want to give permission to. And if you do, it would require that they have a certificate of insurance and abide by some basic ground rules.
Perfect. So maybe it would be an important topic for this, look forward to discuss, because you can't have say yes to some and some not, so to have some sort of guidelines, you know, we do or don't, politically we do or don't religiously.
Now, this gives you some pretty specific guidelines and ability to say no without. But it was a draft, and I wanted to get a copy out to you and see what you thought.
I like it, but can we have, because it's referencing many of the things that the Recreation, Recreation Commission deals with. Could I ask them to just take a look in, from their perspective, what their thoughts would be? And also, in terms of the last part of it, in terms of fee schedule, I don't know if there was left light for a reason or if.
It was.
Okay.
I looked at what we have right now on the resident and non, and non-commercial, and it was fairly low, which I assume you want for good community relations and to build things, but you might not want it.
So during your research, did you find out what other entities, other towns are charging these commercial and non-municipal entities?
Yeah, a number that would seem to be pretty common was $200 for a half day and $400 for a whole day. Some of the other ones had contingent upon what the energy usage might be, that sort of thing. Those were more Dover's policy, Somersworth's policy. And I think these are communities that have seen, you know, large carnivals that use a lot of electricity, have their own generator lots of times, but also use a lot of resource.
And in terms of, we've got in here in terms of if they do damage, but maybe I missed it in terms of what if they don't clean up after themselves?
Yeah, that's a big one.
That should be in here as well.
Maybe a deposit or something that then be returned?
Yep. I can certainly make sure that we've got a deposit for cleaning.
Yeah, I'm just looking, I don't see anything about if they make a mess.
Okay.
And also, you're going to think about the damage.
Damage number, number, on number six. I didn't see anything like, they kind of trash the place.
Right.
Maybe I missed it.
Make sure, I'll make sure that I've got that in there.
Great.
Because if they trash the place, we either, we've got to pay somebody to clean it up, so, you know, while they trash the whole place and the deposit's only a couple hundred bucks, that's.
We're not having people come, but they're going to trash the place.
All right, no, I certainly, I'll edit that accordingly and get a copy to the Parks and Recreation, and hopefully I'll have PrimeX's recommendation for the Parks and Recreation to the next day or so.
Okay, thanks.
The next draft I put together was a draft for a Technology Advisory Committee. This was along the lines of the IT Committee that you had asked to put together and get going. This was a little more difficult. Quite a number of the communities around us have IT communities that focus exclusively on broadband and cable TV.
Okay.
Quite a number of other communities that had IT commissions or committees that focused on more than that have disbanded them.
Okay.
I found a number of towns that had disbanded them and said that it had caused more difficulty than benefit. But this was what I had put together along the lines of the guidelines for having a committee with some structure.
We could start it out as a, as a one-year trial period to see how that goes.
Yeah, you could. I got a couple of things, like really, three. In overview, it says, next to the last sentence is, "The Committee will work in collaboration with various Town Departments that use technologies." Like we need, that used, they all use some kind of technology. So if we can strike that.
Okay.
Under purpose, I get the last sentence. You use MTAC, but then you change "the MTC", so if you put an A in there, that would be great.
Yep.
And then on the bottom of page one, I'm not sure where this is coming from, but "Additional ad hoc non-Party members may be added by the Select Board, but only with the consent or by the request of the majority of the MTAG." What's?
If they wanted to, and some of the examples that I saw were short-term ad hoc members with very specific relevance, and the two or three committees that I did find that were functional and still in operation had that phrase in them, so I used it.
All right, that makes sense.
If it doesn't make sense to the Select Board, I can start with.
Give some flexibility on the specific topic.
Well, it says, "But only with the consent." It's like, if we want to appoint another person, and they say no.
They could for, for an ad hoc. But you, you've got guidelines for the number of members you're going to appoint, and.
So you're saying you don't want it so that they. So you're saying you don't want it so that they could put somebody on that the select board didn't agree to?
Hmm, I'm saying if I wanna appoint somebody and they say no, I don't want that to occur.
Okay.
I don't think we have that on any other committee, if we want six people and there's only five. Why are they so special then?
There's general consensus, I will remove that.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It's just trying to be, at least for me, it's trying to be consistent with the other committees.
Yep.
Uh, that we have, so. And that was okay with it.
Okay, let me clean that up a bit with those edits, I'll get that right back to you.
Um, and I know we had two people so far that was interested, at least.
Uh, Mr. Blonquist was interested and it was.
Dean Rubine?
And Dean Rubine.
Okay, so maybe when we get this finalized, we can put something in the eCryer so we can see if we get.
That'd be great.
More people, yeah.
Nice, uh, people with different experiences would be great.
Yep. Okay, and uh, the next draft item I had was a relatively brief uh resident survey, and I called it a performance questionnaire instead of a survey. Um, and this was based on Chairman Brown's concerns, um, and uh desire to get some input from the community about the board. I think his direction was that he would like to know whether the community trusts the select, the select people. Um, I didn't pose the question quite in that manner, but had five questions that I, I think would give you an idea of whether the community felt you were moving in the right direction. I don't know what your thoughts were with regard to the.
Oh, in terms of something that Joe Ford told me, that there's gonna be people in town that support you. There's gonna be people in town that think you're the worst thing that's happened since the devil, and then there's people in the middle that, you know, yeah, it's okay. So depending on who you get to fill this out, you could be like the worst board that ever sat in the town of Lee, or you could be the best one, so I don't know what it tells you unless you can guarantee that a cross-section of all those particular types of people are gonna fill this particular thing out, so I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, um, you know, I was thinking about the format and thinking about the value, um, knowing that return on mailed items is, is frequently pretty low. Um, I, I don't know that it would make a lot of sense to me to spend, I think we, we talked well over a thousand dollars to mail it based on what we paid for the voting guide, and I, I don't know if that's the best use of the dollar, if it's something you maybe wanted to attach to the eCryer or attach to the website, something like that, um.
I think it'd be a survey and we have a lot of different questions and different areas, we find to have some of these questions in there. I think it's very reasonable to let people have their say and to get more input, that's great. Um, but yeah, I think it would have to be a cross, you know, start off with computer, have options, and then of course have some available paper copies for those to even.
Yeah.
Really, right.
Maybe, maybe this is something that we could do, cuz it's always nice to get people's feedback.
I agree, I was, I, you know, if you have something to say, let's.
But maybe this is something we can put in the mix so that when we send out the next board's guide next March, uh, excuse me, February, that this is maybe a page of it, and maybe specific questions.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and that's part of the, of the tool.
And then you can have also ones that they could fill out the door rear session, and then you could collect them and also have it something online that they could fill out, and then call it all those together.
I almost wanna know earlier than budget season because you can make better choices if you, if you really reached out to the community and you really understand what their values and needs are, so I'm wondering if it could be a summer thing that we then have that information going forward as we're making choices.
Then you'd have to send it out.
Uh, well, you have, yeah, you have to get it out and whatever.
The other thing you could do, and I don't know if the moderator would let us do that, is in terms of have them, cuz um this year there's a primary in September. So I don't know if he'd allow us to have those like available like after they voted or something like that, maybe?
That's interesting.
I'm just thinking about ways where people come together in the town to do something, so voting's one of those things, so.
You could have them available up there.
I can uh talk with the moderator and see what his thoughts would be regarding any of those events, like.
That September timeline would be great, cuz then there's your, you'd have the information.
And maybe we'd have somebody outside of the voting that, you know, would you mind filling this out for us and don't make it too onerous? And then that person could collect them.
Right, or they should please take it home or whatever, you know, whatever.
Yeah, it's a box or a therapy or something.
Right.
Your initial charge from the discussion was fairly few questions and.
Yeah, yeah.
I do know last year during the um goals meeting, we talked about having a survey and getting more information out and getting, getting more feedback from the public, because there, it's hard to know what people think, and you, you just know what you see on, you know, a few people post on a page or whatever. More people we hear from, the better.
Okay, I will work on that and also talk with the moderator about his thoughts on any of those options.
Great, thank you.
Okay, that was pretty much it, under miscellaneous, I had a couple of things that I'm not record likely in the detail I wanted to. One thing that um Mr. Bullock and Mr. Nemeth may be aware of today is our fuel contract with New Hampshire DOT is going away.
Oh, okay.
They have ended it effective uh February twenty-eighth and are going to rack price. Um, I think diesel hangs on a little longer, Steve, from what I recall, they're not changing diesel, but unleaded gasoline.
And why are they terminated, did they say?
Uh, because they think they're gonna lose their shirt by honoring the contracts they signed with all of us.
It's not, it's not just us, it's.
Everybody.
Dennis K. Burke was the company that was.
The fuel distributor that was.
Dennis K. Burke was the one that had won the contract and the fixed price was a dollar ninety-four.
Wow.
So we've been paying a dollar ninety-four for gas for a while, and if it went below that, we got the lesser.
Mm-hmm, wow.
Price. So as we based our budgets on was the fact that we're gonna have a dollar ninety-four gas until end of twenty twenty-three or close to the end of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
That's now gone away.
We need to rethink how we.
That was more than just us, like that's all Department of Transportation, they were getting the same price for their pickup trucks and all the stuff they're running, so they're, the state of New Hampshire's now in the same boat we are.
But you use more diesel than gas though, right?
Yeah.
So when does the diesel go away?
Twenty-four, so like that's, we're still good on that.
Yeah.
And then we put, that, we, that is a rack price, it's not completely fixed, but, I mean, like, we're getting a good enough price on it. And our first month, cuz we're buying that diesel from, for the new truck, our first month of diesel cost was a hundred and thirty-eight dollars, so. We did pretty good.
That's a lot less than we were spending before.
One trip was one, was two thirty-eight, and we did one thirty-six in diesel for a whole month, so.
That's.
Diesel will continue at fixed pricing for many, many more months.
Month, okay.
In terms of, I don't know many, many means, but that's what they're saying.
Yeah, they might be undoing that.
So are you gonna take a look at, I guess everybody needs to take a look at their.
Well, what happened, they, they wrote in the letter, we know it's budget season and we're trying to get it out to you as fast as possible, well. Budget season was like months ago, so you kind of were a little late on that one.
They did it on a backdated basis as well, they last week approved the, ended the deal back to February twenty-eighth.
Yeah, and they sent it to us today.
Not that anyone does a lot of extra useless trips, but maybe it's something we should think about, is just being aware of, do we need, you know, could we do this trip together for another one, that kind of thing, just being more mindful of that usage.
But the departments that use gas can, might maybe any can coordinate in terms of, I think I need extra money to, you know.
Definitely gonna need it.
Cuz I think the biggest user of gas is the police department, so.
Tom Johnsonfield has already been in communication about it and is concerned about it and is thinking about all this stuff.
So maybe you can have comment, uh, geez, conversations with them and just find out, do they need extra money in their budget? Cuz the police chief is offering up some money for a server and maybe he doesn't have that, because.
I think he does, we'll see, but I know we've also discussed the possibility of going to electric, and so that's something he's been, been interested in, and there's uh some money funding through the town, uh, through the state, so we can talk about that, in the future we have some.
So we can get Tesla's quad cars.
And Tesla's not the only electric.
They had Teslas and they also had electric police Harley-Davidson, there was a grand.
Really?
There's a lot of grants available right now, there's a lot of money.
Those electric cars, they, they have good, good get-up-and-go, so.
That's exactly, there's others, now, police departments that have had a lot of success with that, and so they'd like to set a trial.
The, the one thing that I think the letter did say, you were kinda lucky on is, is as they increase the price, the price has gone from thirty or forty-five days or something like that.
Yeah, it is, if they estimate thirty to forty-five.
It doesn't just go up like the pump is, so if it goes up, it's probably per, it's probably on a month basis, so it'll be per month.
Okay.
So does the state then take the extra, and if we're going past that price, who pays that? If we've done a good deal and it costs more?
We're not getting, oh, I don't know, for the diesel.
Oh, Dennis K. Burke eats the, the, the thing, it kinda goes with that whole salt thing that we.
Got it.
Heard about earlier this year, cuz Warren's eating it.
Right.
Eat that extra ten dollars, so.
If he's eating the difference right now, he's probably gonna be bankrupt.
Which is I think why they, cuz there is ways for them to get out of the contracts, you know.
All right, we'll see what happens ahead.
Something.
Eric, tell that to the reporter.
Mr. Eric?
Steve, what did you say you're paying right now, what's the contract price for diesel? Dollar thirty, did you say?
I think it's like two, two thirty or something like that.
Just as a point of information, Wednesday I bought diesel fuel in Durham and it was four oh four nine.
Exactly.
And Friday morning I bought, I bought a hundred dollars on Wednesday and it was four oh four nine, and I bought a hundred dollars worth on Friday, and it was four eighty-nine nine at the same station, it went up three times on Friday.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what you got to look for next time around.
So we've stopped fueling our trucks up off our skid tag from Hartman and trying to drive them to the state sites as much as possible, because.
Yeah, are you going to Durham?
Yeah.
Durham or Durham or depending on which plow you're on, the road happen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I had nothing.
But Steve's here for a purpose, what's he, what's he here for?
I was just gonna talk about the first one, the consent agenda, if there were any questions about it.
Diesel, huh?
Oh, okay, that's, I just, I just assumed I'd get a question, so it's still the risk, it's always the state.
I didn't see you really mean.
I have this. The consent agenda in hand, which includes the contract for the engineering services, we have Chesley Brook.
Yep.
Which is alternately spelled in every letter I get from the state, is either Chelsea Brook or Chesley Brook.
Cuz I'm not a person, sure they know.
We should maybe look into that.
So I move to accept the present, the thing that is presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I would note that remove the cemetery deed because that requires a notary to witness your signatures.
No, I'm a notary.
You can't notarize your own signature.
I know, I know, I'm just saying I'm a notary.
Typically Denise would witness you sign and then get notarized, so.
As owner, do I sign and then also?
Um, you could sign next to each other's signature, it's fine, set up as if you were.
Will you sign for us to hear the acting chair?
Carrie had actually signed the original paperwork.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
With the one um signature line.
So I have the safe space for you too?
No, just you sign away and I'll figure myself out.
I wrote one down, one fifty.
Here is this one.
I feel bad that Carrie isn't with us this evening because he is delighted that the agenda looked relatively short.
I know, what if I were to miss? I hope he feels better, yeah.
Item number five, any unfinished business?
Not that I have at this time.
And new business, we did the mask protocol, running anything under miscellaneous?
No, we chanted.
Nope. Item number seven, other, other business, there's too many businesses, like, too much business. All right, so um I moved it into non-public session, enter R C ninety-one A colon three, section two, sections A and C. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? No, roll call though, Katrin Casper?
Yes.
Scott Bubbe, yes, motion passes.
Your cell phone. Motion to steal the minutes?
Uh, second?
I'll, I'll roll.
No, no, roll call, Katrin Casper?
Yes.
Scott Bubbe, yes, motion passes, anything else? Nothing else?
Don't forget to vote.
Oh, yeah, nothing else. So Carrie will be here in the morning, the year in the afternoon, and then I'm at night, and then I have a proxy between the.
Yeah.
Denise and I will figure out how to post results and um I will uh be here late. Um, and also for those of you sharing the first thing tomorrow, Karen and Katrin and Scott are here. I left the uh town administrator's computer in the uh chair of the supervisor of the checklist this evening, and Liz is bringing a second one for them as well, cuz they no longer have laptops that function and.
What time do I need to be here? By seven, obviously, but is there a time before that when I should be here?
Well, they open at seven, so.
So a little bit before?
Sure.
Yeah, just a little bit.
The rest of you will be here at six thirty here.
We're coming in at six.
Six fifteen.
And what do.
You don't need to be here at six.
What does a person typically do?
Well, whatever the moderator tells them to do, but.
Okay, so they'll give me a job, something like that.
Yeah, they'll give you, so you're gonna probably do some disinfecting, you're probably gonna do some like monitoring.
Telling people this booth's empty, that one's empty, things like that.
Picking up the pens off the floor, getting the pens before the people take off with them out the door, you know, big things, so.
Yeah, then you give the pens to me and when people come in, I give, yeah, I give people a pen and if they want a mask or sanitizer or whatever.
So where are you gonna be, out front?
Up front of the building.
Okay, so outside?
Yep.
Ooh, were forty tomorrow?
I think a higher forty, yeah.
Oh, girl.
Not supposed to rain, though.
No, it's not supposed to rain.
Thank goodness.
I've got in my head my lawn, my horse.
You were outside all day and they're freezing at the.
Last year, yeah.
Yeah, trooper.
I did get my pop-ups down in case it was forty, but.
Uh, thank you, well, thank you everyone.
All right, motion to adjourn, I do motion, I don't do.
A second?
All those in favor, say aye, motion passes, there we go.